...Fire Protection District into County Service Area 135. There are five requests to speak on this item, all in opposition, and this is a presentation item.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, why don't I go ahead and just let the board know one thing. We received a number of documents from Attorney Craig Sherman. He was seeking relief, ex parte relief, this morning in the court to ask for a stay of proceedings primarily towards the district and towards LAFCO. But that could have impacted our hearings. Just wanted to let you know, our attorney has let me know that no ex parte relief was granted, and so there's nothing that would interfere with us moving forward at this point.
Thank you. We'll begin with the staff report.
Good morning, Vicewoman Jacob and members of the board. I'm joined by Chief Meacham of the San Diego County Fire Authority and CAL FIRE San Diego Unit. In 2008, your board articulated a clear vision for fire services across our unincorporated county. You wanted the county to lead a process of bringing together a disparate group of fire agencies spread across the vast area into a single fire and EMS delivery system. The goal was to enhance the coordination and quality of services provided to residents. With this proposed action before you today, we are on the brink of fulfilling this vision. As you can see on the map, the orange keyhole shape in the middle of the green area represents the Julian Quiamaca Fire Protection District. The proposed merger with the Fire Authority would represent the next huge step towards forming a unified Fire Authority. We have dramatically increased the quality of services so that when a call for service comes across this massive 1.5 million mile coverage area, the same paramedic level of service is provided as in downtown San Diego. Joining Julian Quiamaca with our Fire Authority's County Service Area 135 would only further strengthen our unified agency. Now I will turn the presentation over to Chief Meacham to explain in more detail what today's actions would mean for the Julian area in the region as a whole.
Well, good morning, Supervisors. Since 2008, the county of San Diego has grown into a modern, all-risk fire service composed of 33 fire stations. Fifteen of those are currently providing advanced life support paramedic care. Our system also includes a regional dispatch center, a very comprehensive community risk-reduction fire marshal, and all of the essential support services to staff and operate a modern fire service. In 2005 with the MACO report and in 2007 with the MICRO report, several studies identified the need for the county to standardize and regionalize fire services throughout the back country. Since 2008, 13 fire agencies have come forward to join this collaborative process that we know as the Fire Authority. Julian Quiamaca has been involved in these discussions since the beginning. Twice they have previously voted to not join the Fire Authority. In 2015, facing an increased demand for service and great challenges in maintaining an all-volunteer fire department, they entered into a two-and-a-half-year agreement with the county of San Diego to provide an enhanced level of service. That agreement ended on January 1st of this year. The district continued to face those challenges, and after a meeting with their fire chief and their board in April, they voted to file dissolution papers with San Diego LAFCO and join the Fire Authority. What does this mean for Julian? Julian would be incorporated as part of the County Fire Authority within the latent powers expansion of County Service Area 135. They will receive the full benefits of joining this regional system, which will include year-round career staffing of both the Lake Quiamaca Fire Station and the Julian Fire Station. The Julian Fire Station will be staffed with a three-person paramedic fire engine. We will integrate the current Julian volunteer and reserve firefighters into our county system of volunteer reserve firefighters. We'll provide long-term financial support and commitment to the community. The community will also receive comprehensive community risk reduction. And as you know, Julian is really one of those areas we need to continue to focus on mitigating the threat of a fire before it occurs. The county will also retire the debt service on the existing Julian Fire Station, alleviating a $50 benefit assessment to the general public. And as you can see from the slide above, we're well-suited to provide services to Julian. We have 12 fire stations located within 30 minutes of Julian and five paramedic fire engines located within 20 minutes of the district. And so with that, I'd like to turn it back to Ron.
Thank you, Chief Meacham. The recommendations before you today would allow the Fire Authority to take several steps to strengthen fire service in Julian and beyond. The recommendations would authorize the Fire Authority to submit an application to LAFCO to expand County Service Area 135 to include Julian Quiamaca Fire Protection District. It would also authorize the transfer of real property, assets, and liabilities from the district to the County Fire Authority. And finally, it would approve the addition of one staff year from the district to the County Fire Authority. Thank you very much. That concludes this presentation.
Thank you. We'll proceed to the public speakers.
Thank you, Chairman. We have five requests from the public to speak, all in opposition. I'd like to invite forward Tony Harder, John Elliott, William Everett, Lori Foss, and Jacqueline Egan-Berry. You'll have three minutes each to address the board. Please begin by stating your name for the audio record.
There's no risk in our community. The equipment we have, the volunteers we have, the reserves are more than San Diego County Fire Authority is going to provide.
Ma'am, I'm going to pause your time just for a moment. Could you please state your name for the audio record?
My name's Tony Harder. I'm a resident of Julian, California. And you were wrong. The board voted four or five times, not two. We did do... After being told that we were going to negotiate with the county, they voted to dissolve. We did, within the last month, gather 10% of the registered voters in Julian and did a referendum, which makes that vote null and void. And yes, our attorney was at the court this morning to get an ex parte because we are being damaged by your action because we have 17 vehicles, support vehicles. You're going to replace that with one paramedic engine. And if my house is on fire, I'm going to make, wait, 30 to 20 minutes for a fire, a first responder? That's not acceptable. We have an assessment that's been certified by the registrar, which will be on the November ballot, that will increase our fire protection fee from $50 to $200, which will allow us to expand our services much greater than yours. Taking over our district is a benefit to California Service Area 135, but it's detrimental to our community.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please.
My name is John Eagle Spirit Elliott. Ha'aka, mahan manueya. Nyaj Johnny Ishpa mat hau. Nyaj nakatun kumman. Nyaj matarwa mat hami. I am appearing today on behalf of the Kumai Degania Land Conservancy, a nonprofit intertribal organization created for the preservation of our Kumai cultural areas. I want to be specific that KDLC is neither in favor of or against the decision before you today. I'm here to present information that may impact that decision. KDLC owns two certain properties within the County Service Area 135 and the Julian area that are relevant to your decision today. These properties were transferred to KDLC as a successor from the Francis H. Moser Family Trust. At the same time that the two open space properties were deeded to KDLC, the trust documents deeded a 6.4 acre property to the Julian Quiamaca Fire Protection District pursuant to document 2009-0316332. It was not deeded to its successors or assigns, only to the district. That deed required the district to construct and use the property as a fire station within three years of the conveyance of the property, which it failed to do. But the district did ultimately build a fire station. The document also states that the district permanently... If the district permanently abandons the fire station, title to the subject property shall automatically vest in the KDLC by right of reverter. The county's agenda notice on this matter acknowledges that on April 10th, 2018, the Julian Quiamaca Fire Protection District adopted a resolution to submit an application to LAFCO for dissolution, which signified its intent to permanently abandon the fire station and turn the district assets over to another agency. By dissolving itself as a district, the property where the fire station was eventually constructed automatically reverts to KDLC for its use, consistent with the underlying deed. We understand that as part of this process, the county, through the San Diego Fire Authority, plans to seek LAFCO approval to transfer the assets of the district to the County Fire Authority. However, the county staff does not appear to be aware that the district will not own the property where the former district fire station resides. KDLC has not been approached by the county, LAFCO, or the district regarding these deed issues or any proposed future use of the property. I strongly suggest that the parties meet to discuss the county's future interest, if any, in the property where the former fire district station resides. I am submitting a document with my phone number and our attorney's phone number for contact.
Thank you very much. That definitely will be an issue that staff will need to look into and work with you on. Next speaker, please.
Who's the next speaker?
Next speaker, in any order.
Does it matter?
It doesn't matter. Thank you. Good morning.
Hi. Good morning, everyone. Madam Chair, everyone at the council. I'm not used to speaking in public, but I'm here on safety issues regarding CAL FIRE, and Mr. Meacham is aware of these things. We've brought this up many times. Okay, we have, there is a two-in, two-out... Oh, I'm sorry. There is a two-in, two-out OSHA...
Ma'am, I'm going to pause your time for just a moment. Would you please state your name for the audio record?
Oh, yes. Lori Foss, F-O-S-S. My great uncle was a governor of South Dakota. That's my only connection to politics. So, OSHA has a two-in... I also have a disability, so I might have some trouble remembering some things, so I have to write them down. I might need a little more time. Okay, with all due respect to everyone here, including Mr. Meacham, there is a two-in, two-out OSHA fire regulation that spells out for the outlying and rural areas of the population. Julian is 75 to 80% rural, I mean, outlying. And per their two-in, two-out survivability is great, but the option that they've proposed for San Diego and for Julian is two-person. It's already in place in Palomar, even though it stated that's not in place, where it states survivability is unlikely. Brain death less unlikely before resuscitation. These are the outcomes that we're awaiting. In 20 to 30 minutes, it's true. It was written, and I've read it. It was by Mr. Hawkins in Riverside. So it was a proposal for cost savings for Riverside, and Julian is going to be allowed to face those consequences. We have 30 minutes to wait for help, and we have Santa Isabel right there, and we love Santa Isabel, and they've been there, our mutual aid, for this entire time. Now they're not allowed to be responded, even though they're five minutes away and we have to wait. And I happen to have a recording of the ambulance canceling a call, not responding Santa Isabel for medical aid for an ambulance as the nearest station, and they were told to wait for 20 minutes for other ambulance aid, and this is by direct orders by CAL FIRE. Santa Isabel's not allowed to respond to anyone off the reservation, and we feel that they're being punished because they supported Julian, but that's our personal idea. Okay, so due to the SRA land jurisdiction by CAL FIRE, they've ordered heartland to not respond Santa Isabel at all. They're not allowed off the reservation. There was an accident right outside their door. They self-responded when they heard it on the highway. Otherwise, it took 19 minutes for CAL FIRE to respond. Had they not responded, it would have been more critical. Now, this is all politics. What I'm carrying, I'm a Julian citizen. All I care about is the safety. We have children, we have tourists on a snow weekend, we have 10,000 people on the snow weekend. Our Julian firefighters know how to get to us. CAL FIRE has canceled themselves on a call in specific July...
Please wind up, please.
Okay. I have a recording here that I'd like to play. I'm trying. I have trouble speaking and remembering.
I think you're doing just fine.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Hopefully this is... Let's see if I can get it going here. [inaudible] [inaudible] can you go ahead and start responding to Santa Isabel Fire, closest resource for state, in July, please? No response for a few seconds. And then she asks again.
Your time is up. Is there anything more on that recording that we should be aware of?
Yes, that they're not responding Santa Isabel. They acknowledge, and they do not respond them as the closest aid, and they made that medical incident wait 20 minutes for the plan for CSA 135 or CA whatever it is.
Okay.
And...
I think you've made your point.
We're in danger.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
All right. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Next speaker, please.
Madam Vice Chair, members of the board. My name is William Everett. I'm a retired Julian firefighter. In 2003, my home burned to the ground while I was out elsewhere in the community protecting other people's homes. The matter before you today doesn't really have anything to do with protecting Julian and Quiamaca from wildland fire. That responsibility is vested in CAL FIRE. It always has been. It's a state responsibility area, and it always will be, regardless of what the outcome of your decisions may be. It's also not about finances or staffing. The district has more than enough finances to carry forth, at least until November, with providing services that are actually going to be more than what CAL FIRE and the Fire Authority are proposing for us. There is one issue that's going to be on the ballot in November, and that issue is asking the citizens of Julian to pay their own way for their fire protection services. Now, again, this is also not about ambulance service, although it's amazing that the county only provides one ambulance for an area this vast in the back county. So, there's going to be another issue on the ballot. The citizens of Julian are not in favor of this, and they've signed a couple of petitions now, one for the cost recovery, the increase of the benefit fee. That'll be on the ballot in November. And the other is to reverse the decision of the Fire Board to dissolve. So, it's been 10 years since the Fire Authority was established. There's no crisis here. There's no staffing crisis, there's no financial crisis. So I ask that you give the citizens of Julian the opportunity to vote, which they want, on whether to go forward with that dissolution or not. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Everett. The citizens of Julian will have that opportunity. There are several opportunities. Next speaker, please.
Hello, board. My name is Jacqueline Egan-Berry, and I would like to speak about Julian today. It's a very unique town. It's as if you go back in time 30 years. People come up because it's a quaint town, and I don't think we understand, as San Diegans, how unique Julian is and how many people come up just for its history. Well, what we don't realize is that people go really fast on the 79, and just in general, and they don't know how to take these roads. And I suggest, first of all, that you do let Julian vote on this issue. We are adamantly opposed to CAL FIRE taking over. We do not feel that CAL FIRE can handle the situation. They don't know the unique town like the people who live there. And as soon as CAL FIRE tries to come in and take over, they'll get rid of the volunteers because as soon as the volunteers... Let me just pause. The issue here is it's a unique situation, and I was on the road on the 79 recently, on the 8th, and I came across a rollover accident. And I am not a first responder, but I waited with the person, and Julian Quiamaca Fire responded appropriately with a fire engine and a paramedic. CAL FIRE showed up 10 minutes later with only a fire truck. They did not get out. They did a head nod, and they kept going. They didn't address the situation because Julian Quiamaca Fire has already had it under control. We've been on our own, we're fine on our own, and we believe we should have the right to decide. We've been financially independent. We don't want to be absorbed by CAL FIRE. This is a unique town. We need everybody, all hands on deck. We want CAL FIRE to be doing the wildland fires. There was also, just last week, a plane crash which started a wildfire. Now CAL FIRE didn't know how to get there, only our volunteers did. We need both, and I encourage you to let Julian vote because we need both. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to give Chief Meacham and our staff an opportunity to respond to some of the speakers' response times, numbers of engines, the KDLC property issue, if you're aware of that.
Madam Chair, I'll take the opportunity. So several items there on the KDL, and I'll defer to County Council. That is one of the items on the LAFCO terms and conditions that we'll be working through with LAFCO. Our initial ruling is that that property would transfer. Certainly, we need to sit down with all parties and ensure that, but as you know, that is part of that LAFCO process. It's a very long process that we need to go through, and that is one of them. This issue of response times, and things has come up over the years, all of these incidents, we have responded to. There is mitigating factors in all of them, specific to the issue with Santa Isabel because this continues to surface. In 2016, we approached the Santa Isabel Reservation about entering into an automatic aid agreement. At the time, they were not willing to do that with the county. We have a mutual aid agreement, meaning when we need them, we can use them. Approximately two months ago, I suspended that because it had, in essence, become back to an auto aid agreement. We're currently working... Excuse me. We're working with tribal staff in Luge and our own staff, as well as the governor's office. I've made several attempts to meet with the tribe. I think it's good for everybody, and it is our intent to get them back to the table to try and enter into that, but we cannot use them in the county service area without a legal agreement with the tribe for them to operate within our system. So we've been committed to doing that. Certainly open up to any other questions you may have.
About response times, there was quite an issue made of response times. Would be worse with County Fire Authority than they are now with the volunteers.
Yeah. Statistically, that doesn't show it. We, as CAL FIRE, have been operating in the community of Julian for over 75 years, and through the two-and-a-half-year period that we were operating the paramedic in Julian, we showed overall reduction in response times by over 30 seconds in the community. And as I've said many times, 1% to 2% of all 911 calls have an error, whether it's a misaddress, the engines have a hard time finding that. Julian is a very difficult area to serve with a lot of the unmarked roads. So we've had one or two incidents where we've had a delayed response, as we've had everywhere. But on average, we respond to nearly 600 calls a year in Julian. So out of those 600, 597 times, we're getting there well within our established response times, and in fact, have lowered those response times. The other issue is, and I have great esteem for the long-term volunteers in the community and the ambulance that serves that community, but one issue specifically with provision of paramedic service, the only paramedic in Julian is on the ambulance. When they transport, if they transport to Children's Hospital down here, one of the trauma centers, that ambulance is out of the community for four to four-and-a-half hours, leaving the community of Julian without paramedic service. Our proposal, as soon as June 1st of this year restores that paramedic fire engine in Julian, as you know, with nearly 80% of our calls pre-hospital EMS cares, I think that's a critical increase in the level of service that we're providing in Julian, is augmenting that ambulance with a 24/7 career paramedic who remains in the community.
Thank you. If there are no other questions by the board, the action today, and this has become very controversial in the community of Julian, and I'm well aware of what is occurring, I'm very familiar with Julian and the uniqueness of this particular community, and I know that the Board of Directors of the Julian Quiamaca Fire Protection District have really struggled over this issue, but most recently, on April 10th, 2018, at their meeting, the Board of Directors of the Julian Quiamaca Fire District voted to proceed with the dissolution of the district and to join the County Fire Authority, CSA 135. So, from my standpoint today, because those individuals are elected by the community of Julian to represent them on very critical public safety issues, I think it's up to us to respect that decision, and I certainly do. And therefore, I think the action today before us is fairly simple. It basically authorizes the submission of an application to LAFCO based on that resolution that was adopted by the Julian Quiamaca Board of Directors on April 10th of 2018. I thought it might be helpful to those that are here to have Keen Simmons... Simon, excuse me, Keen, who is the executive director of LAFCO, explain the process from this point on. This is not a final decision. We would just be forwarding this resolution, the recommendations before us, to LAFCO. Keen, thank you.
Correct. So, Madam Vice Chair and Supervisors, if the board proceeds with your action today, LAFCO will essentially treat your request to expand the latent power approval of CSA 135 and the existing proposal we have on file from Julian Fire Protection District as a concurrent proposal. There's about a 60-day, minimum 60-day process for staff to do all the analysis required under state law, and then we will bring that item eventually to the commission at a notice hearing. What I mean notice, every landowner, every registered voter within the Julian Fire Protection District boundary is going to get a letter from my office saying, "At this day and at this time, LAFCO is going to consider the potential dissolution and transfer of fire protection to CSA 135." If LAFCO, if LAFCO approves that proposal, there's going to be at least one, if not two, opportunities for the public to directly get involved in the decision-making. First, by state law, within 60 days, we then have to hold a protest hearing. Every landowner, every registered voter in Julian will have an opportunity to submit a form to LAFCO saying they oppose this action. If there's enough, if there's enough after the end of that protest hearing, we're going to hold an election. So you had mentioned, Vice Chair, earlier about whether or not the people get to vote. If there's protest and it's enough, they will vote on this, straight up or down.
Thank you, Keen. I appreciate that. Just so everyone knows what the process is and opportunities for public input, that all those will be notified that have an interest in this. As the chief said earlier, I think, Ron, you mentioned it too, that we've come a long way. We've come a long way since the 2003 Cedar Fire, and then '07, and most recently, the one we had. The formation of the County Fire Authority is a big deal, and that was formed in 2008. And since then, county government, this Board of Supervisors, has allocated almost one-half of a billion dollars, almost $500 million, on improving fire and emergency medical services issues since 2003. We've brought together a fractured system, thanks to the great team of people that we've had, and the goal has always been to unify command and control and improve the day-to-day level of service, particularly in our back country communities, some of which were unserved and certainly underserved. The bottom line, it has meant a faster response time to fires and emergency medical situations. And when someone has a heart attack or a medical emergency of any kind, that response time means the difference between life and death, it can. And this is the goal of the Fire Authority. And this is the goal of the Fire Authority, and there has been significant progress along those lines, and as a result, lives have been saved. Realizing the impact on public safety, because this is a public safety issue, I believe the district has now made a very, very tough but correct decision to move forward with the LAFCO dissolution process. And so it needs to play itself out through the most important venue, and that would be LAFCO. So if LAFCO moves forward with approving the dissolution of Julian, there's still an opportunity, as Keen mentioned, for a protest and a subsequent election if there are enough people. So with that, our job, I think, today is the second step. The district Board of Directors took the first step. This is the second step, and I would put a motion on the floor to move the staff recommendation to move this forward then to LAFCO.
Second.
There's a second? Supervisor Horn?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd point out to the public that both myself and Supervisor Jacob, we sit on LAFCO. And I thank the Director for coming down here. Your community will have a right to vote on this issue should enough people protest. Before I was a county supervisor years ago, my little community of Valley Center, we voted three times to keep from being annexed into Escondido, and we won each election. So I would, that is up to your public and the people that you obviously represent and for the entire community. But they need to be involved in the decision-making. Your elected representatives who sat on the fire board have initiated this, and so we have to respect that. Those are people you elected to represent you. Should you want to change that later in the process, as Mr. Keen pointed out, you will have that right to vote. So I'm going to vote to proceed with this issue, but it needs to, the process isn't over yet, and if the five people that came to speak against us can produce enough people to go to the ballot box, we'll certainly have a legitimate election in Julian before we make that decision.
Thank you. Seeing no other supervisors wishing to speak, please vote.
To be clear, the motion includes all of the chief administrative officer's recommendations. The motion passes unanimously with all board members being, all board members who are present voting aye.
Thank you.
Your next...